Good evening and welcome to the January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, Tuolton City Council meeting. We went long executive session, so there was no work session that took place previous to this meeting. So those items on the work session, we're going to move to the council communications section of our agenda tonight. So starting off tonight has become our regular custom lately. Let's start with Council Brooks with a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen.
Good evening, Council. As of this morning, our state's death toll has gone risen to one thousand eight hundred and eighty individuals who have died of COVID. We've had one hundred and thirty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty eight individuals that have been positive for COVID. And we also now have administered a cumulative total of three hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty two first and second doses of COVID nineteen vaccinations. And to date, four hundred and ninety two thousand, four hundred and fifty doses of vaccine have been delivered to sites across Oregon. And we know nationally, we've reached over four hundred thousand deaths in our community with new strains of COVID nineteen virus infecting our area and areas abroad. And with this in mind, we ask for a moment of silence to remember those that have lost their lives to COVID and those suffering due to the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brooks. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates is usually the keeper. Anybody at the poll center, Bates?
No mayor, there's no one at the poll center for public comment, and I haven't been reached out to by anyone in the comments section.
All right, so I'll give. Anyone want to make any public comments? I see some familiar faces, familiar names that. Nope, all right, thank you. That brings up, brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items that are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like well then removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of item one, consideration of approval of the city council work session at regular meeting minutes of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Shouldn't that be two thousand and twenty one?
Yes, sir, it should.
All right, so amend down a little bit. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, seven dash twenty one, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to a professional services agreement with Murray Smith, Inc. For the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. And finally, item number three, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, nine dash twenty one, authorizing the city manager to execute a cellular communication site lease with Spectre Site Communications LLC. Would any city council like an item removed from the consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion and a multiple seconds to pass the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll start across the pictures here. Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It passes unanimously. All right, moving down to special reports. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce the Community Conversations on Police Use of Force Report. This is an item that the Chief of Police Bill Steele, Megan George, Cheryl Lombos, and quite a few city staff has been working on as well as the community. So there's a PowerPoint presentation tonight that we're teaming to be myself, Megan, and Chief Steele. I'm assuming we're going to kick off with the PowerPoint presentation. All right. All right. So as you recall, the purpose of our conversations was to review our police department's use of force policies in light of feedback from our community and the national movement's call for police reform after the murder of George Floyd in May, two thousand and twenty. We went through a series of conversations that quite a few people attended and were pretty proud of the effort that the city put into to reach out to the community and hear what they had to say. Next slide, please. So tonight, if you have not looked at the report yet, the report is issued and it's online. We have for tonight's points of discussion, we have an introduction to purpose, the process that was we went through with the three sessions and the key takeaways from those three sessions that we heard from the community. Next slide. I'm not going to read this. Basically, you know, why did we do this? We all know that with the murder of George Floyd, there's quite a social movement to review police use of force because of what happened in his murder. And many communities across the United States decide to look at their use of force policies and see what they could do to make them better, more reflective of their community standards and make sure people were aware of what the police use of force was. The good news for our department is we have a very professional police department led by Chief Steele. Through the conversations, it was obvious that most of the folks, I should say all the folks who attended the community conversation sessions were very supportive of our police department, had very positive interactions with our officers and did have something, you know, some ideas that will be covered tonight. But I was very proud of, and I know our council is, of the respect our community has for our police department because they are very community minded. Back in the day before COVID, we did have, you know, our annual police event, the National Nights Out. At every social event that the city had, the police department was represented and folks felt at ease to come into officers and talk to them and getting to know their officers. So the good news is we're not like a lot of different cities in the United States where there's a very rough relationship between the community and their police department. We're in a very good position where that is not an issue we have to deal with. But we do have to do with one main issue that Chief Steele will get to. Next slide. So here are the four things. You've seen these slides before of, you know, reimagining, reimagining our policing pledge. So what we committed to was to review our policies, to engage our community in that review of our policies, reporting back out, which is the written report we have tonight, and this brief summary of that report. And, you know, if reforms are needed, making sure they get completed and approved and implemented by the city council. At this point, I believe I turn it over to Megan.
That's correct.
All right. Practice is amazing. All right, thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Mayor. So as the mayor indicated, the step that we're at right now is the third step in the process, which is to report on the findings of our review to the city council and to the community. So that's what this presentation is in part intended to do. So to detail our process a little bit, when we met and originally started talking about this, we wanted to make sure that we built in enough time to the process to really have good conversations in the ways that they needed to happen. And so for that reason, we chose to host three separate community conversations with a different purpose and agenda for each of them. We also wanted to make sure that we didn't drag this out over a long period of time. And so for that reason, we spread them out over the three month period beginning in October, I believe, with the third one wrapping up in November, or excuse me, December. So the timeline that you see on the screen, the first session occurred on October first, fourteen. The second meeting that occurred was actually with the Diversity Task Force. We did reach out to two community groups to try to meet in spaces that they felt comfortable with and encourage them to participate in the process, but also hear their questions and their feedback along the way. Unfortunately, we were only able to meet with one of them, and that was the Diversity Task Force, which was on November fourth. The second session happened on November eighteenth, and the third session happened on December ninth. So I'll go in on the next slides into a little bit more detail on the content and agendas for each of those meetings. So the community conversations, as we branded them, there were three different meetings, each with its own agenda. The first session was a presentation from Chief Steele and some of his staff. And the purpose of this was to provide an opportunity for the community to take a look at the use of force policies and get to know the police department overall. And so the presentation included a summary of department operations, law enforcement authority, the legal aspects of use of force, training, and the use of force data. As part of this session, we also had a short opportunity at the end of the meeting to hear questions from the audience. This was the most well-attended session with about thirty-three attendees. So the second session was scheduled about a month later, and the reason for that was to encourage community members to send questions, either that came up as they watched the first meeting or maybe watched the video later on, or as they reviewed the use of force policies, and then provide our staff enough time to take a look and prepare answers for those questions. So the second session was designed to provide answers to all of those questions we had received in between. So in total, and either via email between these sessions or during one of the three sessions, we received fifty-three questions from the community on a variety of different topics. We documented each of the questions that were asked, and you can see that in the appendices to the final report. And then, of course, the third session was our listening session. So the idea was that people had had a chance to get to know the department a little bit better, ask their questions, and then they would come to the session prepared to provide comments. So this session had about twenty-four people in a total attending. And we had an opportunity for open-ended feedback and responses to three prompts that were provided during the meeting. Those prompts also appear in the final report. So we did not record comments made during this meeting. However, we did record all written comments that were provided throughout this entire process and following this third session. In total, we received thirty-eight written comments from twenty-seven different people. So throughout this entire process, we had over fifty-five different people participating in one of these four meetings, whether they were a community conversation or the Diversity Task Force. If we add in the written comments that we received from social media or via email, we have closer to seventy-five to eighty different people participating in some form in this process. What we saw along the way is that we had a lot of people who attended all three sessions or who popped into one or two, but we also had new people attend that third session as well. So as I mentioned, the Diversity Task Force was one of the groups that we had reached out to. So the Diversity Task Force is a community group. We have a staff liaison, Betsy Rodriguez-Ruf, who manages that group. The meetings are held in Spanish, and they talk about a variety of topics related to community engagement. So this was one of the topics that they approved to appear on their agenda, and Chief Steele visited with them. They had several questions throughout the way. Our new library community engagement specialist, Immer Onorato, was able to facilitate and translate during the meeting, and he shared some of these example questions with us. So how can you ensure use of force is only used when necessary? How do you approach policing predominantly white communities versus more racially diverse communities? And then is there anything local police Tuolton can do in case of an ICE raid? Immer also shared that following this meeting, he heard feedback from the group that this was a good opportunity to build trust and that they also had expressed some concern and interest in learning more about the rise in petty crime in certain areas of the city. The other group that we reached out to meet with is formerly called the Grupo de Mujeres, and apologize for my accent. They recently renamed the Peely Group, and that meeting was not able to occur due to the lack of space as a result of the pandemic restrictions. So this slide has bubbles, and the bubbles are indicative of the number of comments we received on each of these platforms. So in addition to hosting the four meetings that happened, of course, virtually, we also encouraged people to respond via social media in a variety of different ways. And we did hear from a lot of people in this format. So you can see across the screen that we received comments via Facebook, via Instagram, via the Nextdoor and the Neighbor's app. We did have one person choose to use a virtual comment box that we provided on the website. And then we also received six comments via email, although seven as of today. We received a lot of feedback this way. And in addition to recording the questions that were asked as part of this process, all comments that were provided in writing were also captured. And the report includes a sampling as well as a full appendix with all of the comments. So one thing I did want to share as part of this is, and I think the mayor mentioned it earlier on in his introduction, is that we had a lot of help as part of this process, and when able, we leaned on existing relationships. The example that I provided in the report was our volunteer coordinator, Jackie Conan, reached out to their database of volunteers to ask them to look at the process and see if they might be willing to engage. We also reached out to community academy graduates. Jennifer from the police department was instrumental in that, and then, of course, our community engagement coordinator, Betsy, also did a lot of one-on-one and group outreach. So through those methods, we were able to reach a lot of people. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Steele for our key takeaways.
All right, thank you, Megan. Go ahead and take the next slide here. You know, just real quick, as I reflect back on this process, you know, when you go into something like this where you're opening yourself up to criticism, it can be a little unsettling. But I was pretty confident that it was going to be ultimately a positive thing for our department. It was going to give us an opportunity to listen to our community, hear what concerns they had, make modifications where we need to do as a department, and then move forward and provide better level of service. And that's ultimately what we're going to do. I have no doubt about that. The themes that we pulled out of that, we narrowed it down to six quick issues that I'll walk through here. And none of them were honestly a real surprise to us. There are some of them were ongoing issues that we've been working through. And some of them, you know, present some challenges that are going to be a little bit more difficult than some of the other takeaways. But the first one here, for example, focuses on mental health and how do we better serve people when they're in crisis? And, you know, this is actually something that, again, that's been ongoing for quite a while now. And in fact, today I was just emailing back and forth with Washington County Mental Health and City of Tigard to keep efforts like this moving ahead. And our community is very fortunate. We have a number of resources available to us. You know, we have a solid county mental health department. We have a urgent care walk-in center for people suffering from mental illness and crisis situations. We have a crisis intervention team that can respond twenty-four hours a day. We have a program with mental health response team that pairs up clinicians and police officers and deputy sheriffs to respond to these types of situations. The biggest issue we have is making sure that we have those resources available to our community in a timely manner. So a lot of those resources are based sometimes in Hillsboro or other parts of the county. We just need to make sure that they're here locally. So again, this is something that we've been working through for a while, and we're trying to do our best to kind of speed this process process up a little bit, bring those resources a little bit closer to our home here. And I think we're making good headway on that. Like I said, I was just actually emailing today about this. There's also discussions about what's known as the Kahoots Model, which is a program that's been fairly discussed on Eugene. A lot of those conversations are taking place now to see what it would take to make something like that happen here locally in our area. So it's a big topic. It's hugely important to our community and many others around us. And there are a lot of steps underway that we're going to continue to focus on to make sure that that we're equipping our officers and our community to handle when situations like this present itself. Go ahead, Megan, number two. So policies regarding using the least amount of force reasonable. So I will tell you, I've been a police officer in Oregon for twenty-five years now, and this has always been the way I've been trained, and I know our officers are trained this way as well. Number one, we want to avoid using any force if necessary. And if we can't do that, we've always want to use the least amount of force. So this is a perfect example of making sure our policies match our training. And it's something that we probably just, I'm not going to say lost focus on, it's just something that we just assumed was in place because it's been so common for so many years on how we train police officers, not only around here locally, but in the state of Oregon. So this is a good example of some policy cleanup that we're working through. Our use of force policies, in addition to the all the other police policies that we have, they're living documents, so we're always consistently updating them, changing them, whether it's based on case law or even a situation like this where we just need to make sure it's crystal clear. And he gives our officers a good reference to point back to if they ever need it. So this one is underway. I can tell you, our policies, just specifically about use of force, have changed three times this year based on new laws that have come into place or cleanup like situations like this. So it's definitely on the forefront of things that we're working through. And I have no doubt in our next round of policy updates, we'll have something like this easily taken care of. Go ahead, the next one. So this one focuses again on policies and de-escalation. Prior to George Floyd, our policy manual referenced de-escalation in just a few areas. We've since corrected that and made sure it's prevalent through our policy manual. But again, de-escalation wasn't something new for the police department. It's something that we've been, it's been a common term that we use for. I was trying to pinpoint it back to probably two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen is when we really started to try to focus on de-escalation techniques, and it mainly comes back to dealing with people on a mental illness, a crisis situation, people that might be under the influence of a drug or intoxicant. So it wasn't a new concept for us, but again, we just need to make sure that it's solid in our policies. It's always been there, but it's in there more than it was in previous editions. All right, number four. A lot of themes that we heard was making sure our officers have what they need to be successful, making sure that we're providing the training to prepare them for these situations. So this one talks about recognizing when somebody is in distress. And well, it's a basic concept that we train. We began an initiative back in two thousand and nineteen to send every one of our police officers through an additional forty hours of crisis intervention training. It's a little bit advanced level training. We're not fully through the department. I will tell you, we had to take a pretty big pause in two thousand and twenty with the pandemic. This class is hosted by Washington County Mental Health. Again, it's forty hours. It's a hands-on training. So there's some classroom lecture, but there's some scenario-based training that comes along with it on how to interact with people that are suffering from mental illness. We actually bring in some from Washington County Mental Health, we're referring, partner up with NAMI, the National Alliance of Mentallyill. We'll refer, we'll send some people over to help our officers be better equipped to handle some of those situations. So there's scenario-based training that comes along with the classroom portion. Again, it's forty hours. I'd say we're about halfway through the department now. Washington County just gave us an update two weeks ago that they're hoping to resume those classes towards the end of spring, first part of summer. So that's definitely something that's on our mind and we're working towards. The next one has to do with making sure our training is up to date about cultural awareness and racial bias. So that is something we do train our staff on. It's a topic of training at our state police academy. We probably need to spend a little bit more time in an area like this. It's a challenge to get officers the training they need. And an example of that is in Oregon, every officer in the state to maintain just a basic level of certification has to have twenty-eight hours of training every year. And that includes use of force training, firearms training, mental health training, ethics training. And so there's a lot that comes on just maintaining that basic level of certification. So every time we try to enhance our training, it becomes a balancing act, making sure we still have people, you know, patrolling the neighborhoods, responding to nine-one-one calls, but then also getting the training they need. So this is something we'll probably continue to focus on a little bit more in the future. It's going to be in addition to the crisis intervention training that we've had underway too. And the last one. One of the community members recommended more regular updates to the city council. So I'm always happy to talk to anybody that wants to listen to me about the police department. Some of the information that we could discuss, like presented in the past, specifically about the traffic stop data, use of force data is information we already pull once a year to take a look at. But I'm happy to do that on a more frequent basis if that's what the desire is. And then reporting on officer misconduct as well. And they do want to make sure, especially the council and our community knows, we don't have a significant amount of officer misconduct. We definitely work through performance issues, you know, none of our officers are perfect. I'm not perfect. There's always a better way to do something potentially. So whether it's something as simple as a supervisor kicking back a police report for additions, corrections, modifications, we're always paying attention to performance like that. Evaluations are completed every year with recommendations on how to do their job better. And then, you know, there's times where, you know, we might hire a person that just isn't meeting our performance standards and will part ways with them to, you know, and that's just ensuring we have the best people out there doing this job. So that's kind of the performance side of the equation. Misconduct, I'll tell you, I've been here a little over four and a half years now. We gave one officer a little bit of time off unpaid for the damage to city property. I've issued another oral reprimand since I've been here, and that's it when it comes to misconduct. So we do not have a significant amount of misconduct by our officers, or let alone even allegations of misconduct. So it's something we definitely pay attention to. And so this in general is information that we can present. Like I said, some of it, it's just a matter of pulling the information. It just takes a little bit of time. So whether it's presenting it once or twice a year, I'm happy to do that. Maybe we discuss that with the city manager and figure out what works best for you. And I think the next slide just kind of lists those six takeaways I just walked through. And so that was kind of the end of my presentation. So just kind of turn it back over to Mayor and Council.
Thank you. If we can get, see everybody again. Thanks, Megan. So questions for Chief Steele and/or Megan, or myself? Council Brooks? And then Council President Grimes?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for initiating this. And thank you, Chief Steele and Megan, for your leadership in facilitating the communications. I was, I think I attended all of them except for the specific one for the diverse community. And I thought they were really informative, and it was a really good format. It was a really wonderful opportunity to learn. If anyone that's watching is interested and wasn't able to attend, I think that the webinar is available still on the website, and it would be really worth going to to learn. And I am very grateful, and I think we're very fortunate to live in a city with such a strong, positive leadership and police force here. And I feel fortunate to also serve on the Tuolton Community Police Foundation and have an opportunity to talk to Chief Steele at other times. I did want to mention, as far as the Kahoots model goes, as a social worker and a clinical social worker, I had the opportunity to see that model discussed at the National League of Cities Summit this last fall. And so it's getting national attention. The outline of it was put forth really clearly. I'm sure it can be tailored for different areas, but some of the things that I really liked about it is that it puts in collaboration, community-based organization that specializes in mental health and works side by side. As a social worker, I've been in situations going to house visits where my safety wasn't safe, and we need police sometimes to support. This was back in outside Detroit, and there's drug dealers happening and things like that when I'm doing children's visits. And at the same time, there are situations where we don't want somebody that's there to arrest and restrain somebody to be doing, trying to be doing therapy and doing things that, you know, that's not the field that they really got into. So I love the idea of the Kahoots model. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about with mental health is just, I've also been in situations of working with suicidal clients and to know that eighty-seven percent of gun deaths are due to suicide. So there's a lot of people that are armed, that are suicidal, that are successful, actually. It's a much more successful way of committing suicide than all these other ways. And so just raising awareness around, that's the kind of things that we're dealing with in our state. And our state is a little bit of an outlier. So knowing that there are tricky situations with mental health and de-escalation and honoring that that's what we're dealing with. And at the same time, I feel really fortunate having a big caseload, never to have had anyone that committed suicide in my caseload. And I think there's ways of, you know, having those people come through whole. Whole and alive um that are struggling. And then I'm, I have one question and my question has to do with, because this whole thing was kicked off with. Uh George Floyd. And uh I talked to a friend that's been an advocate for a long time for the black community. And has written a book and all kinds of things. And and the question that was posed to me that I would like us to consider is. Why for nonviolent crimes? How can we reduce taking people in for nonviolent crimes? And my other question is, how can we utilize things like? Looking up people's license plates and sending tickets uh versus. So much contact with especially nonviolent offenders. And is that a direction that we're thinking about in going, Chief Steel?
Well, uh so I guess I can start talking about that in a couple of different ways. So there are options to. Uh you know, obviously, when it comes to traffic violations, uh there are potential to tools in place. We already use it in the city for. Red light enforcement and intersections. There is opportunities to do that for speed. I'd have to brush up on uh all the requirements, but I think those laws just recently changed to. Give the jurisdictions opportunities to do speed enforcement in different parts of the city. So there are opportunities like that. So I I'm not saying I'm a a huge supporter of that right now. I would have to research that one a little bit more. Uh because, you know, what might seem like a uh an innocent traffic violation. Uh sometimes leads to more significant crimes, whether it's DUI or um contacting of people that are committing crimes in neighborhoods. So there's a lot of moving parts that, so I'm not going to commit myself to doing away with police officers conducting traffic stops tonight. But we're, you know, like I said, even going into this whole process, we're pretty open to new ideas on better ways to do things. Traffic stops are a good way that police officers get killed every single year. And if there's something that we can do that makes it safer for for our folks, we're, we gotta be open to that as well. So that has to do with uh traffic stops. Did you have part two to that question? I don't remember.
Well, no, I mean, I was thinking about um George Floyd, you know, passing. I I wouldn't know if I had a counterfeit twenty-dollar bill in my hand and I don't know if he knew or didn't know. But the whole start of that and then, you know, what looked to me like a lot of claustrophobia and things like that. It just was in my mind and a lot of people in the black community that I've spoken with. You know, what are these reasons for bringing people in for nonviolent crimes instead of ticketing and things like that? And is there a way that we can, and I don't know what our policy is. In that particular instance, or if we have a lot of problems with things like that in Twalton. But in that particular instance and instances to think about that are kind of like that that instance. Is there a way of doing a different kind of enforcement that's less of a physical? Situation and more of a a fine or a ticket. Instead of this kind of a physical.
So y- you know, the tricky part of that, when you get into the investigation of the the crime. Obviously, you're going to have person crimes, you're going to have property crimes. Uh one could be a little bit easier to address in the manner you're describing. Person crimes are going to be a little bit more difficult, but any crime you you're investigating typically is going to have some type of victim. And so you're going to be, you want to make sure we're factoring into, you know, the the victims' point of view on this. I can tell you that when we issue sight and lose to people, we don't take them to uh jail. They're given a court date to appear before a judge later. Their failure to appear rate is much, much higher. And and even if you take it to the the next step for people that have been lodged in the jail, people that are held in jail. And get the opportunity to see a judge, uh they are more likely to appear in court at a later date than people that. Aren't required to see a judge and are never booked into the jail to begin with. And unfortunately, a lot of those folks continue to engage in criminal activity. So it's kind of a repetitive cycle uh that doesn't seem to end. But I see what you're saying as well. Is there a better way to do that to avoid, you know? That cycle that is potentially putting somebody in a situation where they're going to have to use force. So I I I agree with that. And and again, we're open to a lot of new and creative things, but there are times, especially. When we get into whether it's a domestic violence situation or stringing orders, there are a few times uh we're required by law to make an arrest. And even the people that don't go to court, they're ultimately going to have a warrant issued for their arrest. Those are again, are are times where we're going to be required to make an arrest whether we want to or not. So there's a lot of different factors that could come into play, but. I I definitely hear what you're saying.
Yeah, no, and I specifically said nonviolent crimes. So nonviolent crimes is what I'm talking about for sure. And um and thank you again for all the work and your strong leadership on behalf of our city. I feel very fortunate and safe when I live here. Thanks.
So it's uh Council President Grimes, then Maria.
Thank you. Um. I I have a question um for Chief Steel and I apologize if I missed. This information somewhere in the presentation. Um it seems that the level of mental health and um. General well-being calls for police officers, for people in distress. And it and it could just be the way that it's being covered in the media, but it seems like those types of calls are somewhat on the rise, especially given. The situations currently with COVID and the additional stresses that people are feeling with. You know, finance homelessness, you add it all together. Do we expect our individual officers to all have the same level? Of training and um response techniques for like a mental health break or. A call for someone that's in distress, or do we have teams that we use? Um that receive special training that we try to send out or maybe from neighboring jurisdictions? That's my first part of my question. And then my second part of the question is, how can we help you as a chief and as a department? You mentioned the giant challenge that it is to get enough time for training for officers. In an age where it feels like, you know, policing is continually evolving and we need more training and more resources for our officers. How can we help you? Get to the point where it's not such a horrible challenge trying to rotate officers out for their. Regular training and then the additional training that these times require. Do we need an extra officer? You know, if you could give us some direction on how we can help, I would appreciate that.
So I think you're you're pointing out key areas of concern in policing in Oregon and. So when I was hired in nineteen ninety-six, I went to the the State Police Academy. It was eight weeks long. We now send officers for uh sixteen weeks to the Basic Police Academy. So the need for additional training has definitely grown over the years. So that's just to get through the police academy. And then I mentioned the required training. That wasn't always the case in years past. It is now. It's it's forcing us to provide training so that our officers are equipped to handle these situations. If we were able to figure out a different way to uh. Get these types of calls to different levels of service, we might not have to. Continually create new ways to train our officers to handle those situations. So you know, so we don't have teams of people that we can call on immediately. We have resources available to us throughout the area. But when you respond to a crisis situation, uh seconds matter. And if you're having to wait for a specially trained person to drive from Hillsborough to Twalton on. You know, rush our traffic, it's going to take some time and and that's what's working against us. So we. While we have some great resources available to us, they're not immediately available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So that's what's forced us to make sure our officers have adequate levels of training to handle those situations. It's not perfect by any means. And again, our officers do an outstanding job dealing with a variety of different subjects. I mean, they're forced to be at times. A doctor, a mental health worker, a lawyer, I mean, it's, they're wearing so many different hats and that's. What's kind of got us to the point we're in now where uh we're kind of overwhelming them in some regard. And we've set that expectation of what they're able to do so high. It's a challenge. So I I'm not going to say I need another officer to make sure that we get the training our officers need. But it does change. So. The mental health training that is now required, it wasn't required a handful of years ago. Ethics training wasn't required a handful of years ago. It's not bad training. It's training we want our officers to have. But when you continually stack that that additional layer of training every couple of years, it just becomes a challenge to continually meet that. Uh so number one, I don't need a new officer just to provide training. It's taking that step back and looking at the system as a whole. Which is exactly what this this process was was hoping to help identify. Is there a better way to? Handle people that are in crisis? Does it require a police officer to respond to every single one of those? And that's, that's what we're we're working through. So I I hopefully that answers your question. We've got resources available. They're not always right there when we need them. And when it comes to, you know, what I need to provide the training for the officers, we probably need as a society a clearer. Understanding of what really we're expecting police officers to do in this day and age.
No, I I agree. I I completely feel for the officers. You know, what they have to be from a. Officers counselors, um grief counselors, I mean, my goodness, everything that they have to deal with. I I just can't even imagine. And that's why I'm thinking like, you know, if we had. Someone by shift or someone by a localized team. That we could get a couple of specialists to maybe help out. Is that helpful or is that again, moving? You all in such a different direction from what your core task should be that. It's better to involve different outside agencies to help with these crises rather than try to make our own internal team.
It it would definitely help. Uh I mean, what we've basically done is we've put a Band-Aid on a problem. And it's become a a stopgap for a number of years now. The continuing, the issue continues to grow. Uh but we're not really digging too deep into how to solve the root issue. We're just trying to make a better Band-Aid for, that's going to last a little bit longer.
Well, I just want you to feel like that you have the council's full support and if there's um. Things that you need and resources that you need, I I don't want to speak for everyone, but I know it on my part. I mean, I would. Be always happy to listen and always, you know, happy to put the city's resources at your discretion to help with these. Challenging times because I think that you all do a wonderful job and whatever we can do to support you. It's very important to me and I'm very grateful for the job you guys do.
And I appreciate it. And I will say, our community as a whole has stepped up. I mean, like I said, we have access to resources and I mentioned. The Hawthorne Watkins Center in Hillsborough is a tremendous resource that not very many communities have. The Mental Health Response Team uh with the clinician in the car with a deputy or an officer. I mean, just being involved in that from day one in two thousand and ten, that is a tremendous resource that we've been able to reap the benefits of over the year. And our community has stepped up when it's, whether it's a public safety, uh local option levy, countywide. I mean, that's what helps fund some of those services. So we just, we want our comm- community to continue to support that then, but then make sure. It's not always centrally located in Hillsborough, Revertance, a little bit farther south too.
And we've, uh Council Reyes is up next.
Thank you. Um. Chief Steel, thank you for all that you do and thank you for training um and always willing to to learn and. Just um learn about other cultures and your team. I I think they're very um open-minded. I attended one of the diversity. I think it was early last year when you came. Sorry, my cat just made a big noise. Sorry. Um and you came to one of our meetings and you had a lot of questions from the community and you were so. Graceful and and answering all the questions and very truthful as well. Um I think that. Your work and the work of of any police officer, it's really tough and I think that a lot of people. Because we're in Twalton, huh, sometimes, I mean, I'm, I've seen violence and I see. Crime and true criminals, so uh as well as victims. Um so I feel like your work here is it's really great. Um. Some of the questions that people ask about, oh, how come we don't do this and do that and have that contact list? I I think because we're in Twalton, we haven't really seen um a simple stop. Uh can save somebody's life that's inside a vehicle, an abduction, a um someone that's been. Um raped or being abused or being, you know, in that, in that vehicle and it just a simple stop can save that person's life. I speak for someone that was in a situation like that. Um and it, it was a a traffic violation. That stopped that vehicle from, a cop stopped that vehicle to save my life. And that was, I would never forget that. And I'm from a. People are, I'm I'm talking about someone from the ghetto. I'm from the ghetto and I'm talking about like. The 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 stuff these cops see out there, it's like. I mean, decapitation, body parts. I mean, I I can get very graphic because it could be very graphic. And that's what they're dealing with. And sometimes we think of, we watch something on TV. And we focus on that and it could have done better. Obviously, it's sad, things could have been better. And the police could have done things better. And it's sad that we don't have many lives out there because, you know. Some protocols were not done correctly, but the level of of things that you see out there is just. Insane. I would go crazy. I I don't know how you guys do it. Mentally, I would go crazy. Uh so I really um commend you and your team and police officers are out there that are great and doing the right thing. Because um you do save people's lives and you're out there putting your 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 life. And sometimes we don't appreciate that because. Uh the political focus or whatever's out there, it's just on one little thing. And sometimes we don't see the overall picture and I really think that. Um the training that you're getting, the, all that's going to improve, all that's going to help us, me as well, improve like. The um to learn what you do out there. Um I learned a hard way on how you guys here do work out there because of what I saw. And what I've seen throughout my life. Um and what you guys do here is really great. I mean, going to the community and meeting. You know, serving the kids, talking to the families and all that, that's really helpful. So I think that's going to. Mend a lot of issues and tensions out there. And I think you're doing a great job. I think your 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 team. And I wish a lot of of. Departments like Twalton, police departments like Twalton would take that, like people would be more like, like your team. Because you guys are amazing and I'm always impressed by everything you do and um. So thank you for being so open and willingness and the willingness that you have to listen to. Uh the families, the communities and be able to train your officers and always looking for the improvement of the. Of the officers, um because the officers want to protect themselves. So I think that. You're also um looking for that protection. So make sure that they're not in trouble, that they're not, that they're handling things the right way. So. Um thank you for doing that and um I really appreciate your your work and not just your work, but. Um just the you, the way you handle a lot of these questions that we, they're hard questions and. And I sometimes when I've heard them, I'm like, how is he going to answer that? And I, I'm always amazed of how you answer and and you're always pretty good about what you do and say. So thank you very much for your team and. And for um taking your time to review these new protocols that hopefully would mend. A lot of tension out there in the communities. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
I appreciate that. And I do want you to know, uh when this is all said and done, I I typically will beat myself up a little bit and say, why'd I answer it like that? I should have said something else. But like I said, I I know our officers are out there doing their best every day. They're not perfect, but they're doing a pretty good job taking care of our community. But I like I said, I I know our officers are out there doing their best every day. They're not perfect, but they're doing a pretty good job taking care of our community.
All right, uh Council Sacco.
Thank you, Chief Steel, for for all of your efforts and um your work um through the whole co- uh community conversations. Um I was able to join one of the sessions. I watched one of the sessions virtually. And then um I did miss the last one. Um but it was very insightful. Um so thank you for that. Um. So my question is, do you think after this process that those who did participate had a more favorable view of police in general? And those that maybe are hesitant to reach out participated less? So then is there an opportunity to continue outreach to a um a community, a set of community members that maybe um weren't comfortable reaching out through the community conversations to bridge that gap? To strengthen that relationship and break down some of those barriers? I know you talked about doing training for for um cultural awareness, things like that, uh but actually doing that outreach to those community members that maybe we didn't hear from through this process.
Yeah, so there is no doubt in my mind that, you know, there were people that were involved in this process that were going into, were heavily influenced by what they saw on a national level in the media or other parts of even our local area about how police departments operated. And they didn't really know how we operated as a police department here locally. So we were able to kind of work through some of those questions and concerns as a result of this process. Two thousand and twenty, though, I will say, has been the most challenging year for us when it comes to community engagement. We had to cancel. You know, so many different types of community events that we would have had the opportunity to engage people because it takes a lot to just say, okay, I'm gonna reach out to my police department and ask a question. And I and we totally get that. But where we missed out was the community conversations that would have occurred at the Regatta or the Crawfish Festival where it's just casual conversations when we have a booth, you know, we're standing there chatting with people and people are asked all kinds of wonderful questions at events like that. And we missed that last year. So I'm hoping as we we continue to move past the pandemic and we can get back into the community and engage a little bit more. It will give people an opportunity that might have had a question or concern over the last, you know, number of months. Maybe they'll feel a little bit more comfortable coming up and asking it in a a different setting as opposed to specifically just reaching out to the police department. That's our hope. That's our desire. And that's really what we, why we do what we can to engage in so many different community events is to give people an opportunity to ask questions and and voice concerns.
Counselor Hillier, then Counselor Pratt.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Chief. Um as you know, we always appreciate hearing from you and I'm getting to hear about the amazing things that your officers are doing. And in talking to community members who did participate um in this process, I I again want to reiterate um their level of um, at least from the people that I had the opportunity to interact with. An increased level of respect for you, your position, and our officers and your willingness to be transparent and um be uh vulnerable in this process. And I think that says a lot. Continues to say a lot about you, Chief Steel, your department, as well as the city staff who is engaging everyone. And so to the mayor also, I think the questions that you asked were just ones that um I certainly wouldn't have thought of. And I think the community benefited. So I think it was a great process. And I guess I would just love to um point out that um Counselor Reyes brings up such a great point about your first line of prevention in a lot of ways for a lot of different situations. During and the I five corridor, you know, reminding folks that this is a child trafficking corridor. There are a lot of different things that happen. And um I just want to keep that um at front of mind. And um I also um noticed that several times people mention prevention in different ways and why are you hiding, you know, um behind whatever? And it's like, oh, my gosh, well. That's kind of the cat and mouse game sometimes. But I do um really appreciate that the community sees you as a prevention resource. And I think that has a lot to do with your community outreach in different places. Um and I know at least um stand up kids love to hang out and get pictures at Starry Night and all sorts of different things. So we know you're out there and um being and doing that. I would like to request, though, that we get to see in the reports that get added in some calls for service and different types of things, the number of calls. I think we'll all be very surprised at how many um calls that you go on in different types. So I don't know if that's something um that um chief that you can work with um Sherilyn on and and staff. But I think it would be great for our community to hear really how active things are and how many more times things are peacefully resolved than than not. I think that would just be add to the transparency. So thank you again.
Yeah, and I think that's another good example of, you know, not everyone knows what goes on in our community on a daily basis. And while we live in a very safe community, and I mentioned this to Sherilyn the other day that uh in two thousand and twenty, in all of Washington County, there were five homicides. So we haven't had a homicide in in town since two thousand and eighteen, when we actually had two. But so all of last year and all of Washington County, we had five homicides. There were fifty-five in the city of Portland. So there's a lot going on in our metro area that fortunately we don't have to experience on a daily basis in our community. That's what we're doing. We're doing everything we can to prevent that. But there's a lot of things that go on every day. And it it it's not all criminal. I mean, we got officers that are performing CPR on babies. I mean, that's not fun, but that's part of the job. And then anything up from there. So it's, there is a lot that goes on and we're 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 happy to try to share that information.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi, Chief Steel. I wanted to um also thank you just for um the um Zoom meetings and just your willingness to take this on. I know it had to be difficult and how well you responded to the pretty complicated questions people asked and how thoroughly and how you were willing to use this like as a tool for improvement. But um what I really wanted to ask, um I know you come once a year in front of council and I loved um Counselor Hillier's idea of adding to that report, but I would also like the idea of you coming maybe twice a year or even quarterly so we could be updated more often and um see how you're doing.
All right, I think that's everybody. Council Brooks.
Sorry, I just feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't say one last thing. Um just as far as um I've I've been in the social work field for over twenty years and um and I've watched and and also lived in different areas. And um there is so much that we've talked about in in situations that are very difficult. And mental health showed up actually a few times on the different screens. And so I just want to say I've watched our um well, just moving to this area, the statistics here are worse for treatment for mental health issues and for letting people get to a place where they're decompensating, especially people with severe persistent mental health issues and even those with episodic. Um we have high rates of depression and high rates of suicide in the state. And part of it's, in my opinion, I've seen my profession get decimated and I've seen um the attention, the lack of attention, especially in since I moved to Oregon on this issue. So I want to keep those things in mind and it trickles down. And I really don't think, and from what I heard you say, and I'm not sure, I don't want to misspeak. But I don't think that um the officers necessarily want to be mental health caseworkers or or therapists and um and I just wa- I would feel remiss if I didn't say anything. So thanks for letting me share twice.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay, with that, uh as part of that article that was in Twalton Life, I said I would open the floor to the public uh for comments. And I understand uh Susan Nowak has a comment. You're muted, Susan.
Story of my life. Imagine me who likes to talk. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak and to council and especially to Chief Steel and his department. I came on the the meeting tonight to hear the report because I only got to one and a half meetings when they had them last fall. And um I just have a comment to make. I was asked several weeks ago what what I liked about living in Twalton. And my first it, my first answer was because I feel safe. And at my age and being retired and a senior, it's very important to feel that way. It's important to feel that way at any age. But the fact that I can say that, and I've lived here twenty years, and and every year I have felt safe. I've had very few uh interactions with the police force uh um other than like when my car was broken into and when we had strange people walking on our street. And I did get a ticket for using my cellphone. Uh and and then I don't do that anymore. And unfortunately, I had to have uh called the department for a wellness check on a senior friend. Uh but every time I had an interaction, it was so respectful and so professional that it does make you feel safe. And in my world now, in my senior world, I hear from other seniors how comfortable they are and safe. And a lot of us still live alone and um uh and not always in a in a purely safe neighborhood, maybe, but they feel safe. And in my business world with the chamber, we hear from our business members that it's okay to be here and do business in town because we have this support. And when the foundation shows up and does their thing and su- and supports the 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 department, um I just want to thank the city for having the wherewithal to have Chief Steel and our police force um here and to hire them. But I'm right, I from me personally and and maybe a little bit, I represent the community, I can just say thank you publicly for job well done. And I'm very sure it'll continue to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Uh Base, is there anybody in the Pulse Center that might want to be heard or?
Uh no, Mayor. Just Megan and I.
All right. Well, with that, um I believe we, I'd suggest two motions. One, to accept the report. And two, my request would be if council's okay with it, is for Sherilyn and Chief Steel to sit down and come back with uh, you know, an action plan in those six items and a timeline on how we can meet some of those strategies and objectives. I know these are ongoing. The chief is doing it. Uh but I think having a a date certain on some of these things or just seeing what the plan is to fulfill those requests from the community. And also, as uh Counselor Hillier said, you know, those items that we might want reported out to us uh either semi annually or quarterly, uh so the community is aware of what's going on in the city. And um as well as one of the things that we didn't talk about that didn't pop up that much was, one of the suggestions was to have some of those crime crime data on the city's website that's easily retrievable. Not have to be buried inside of a council uh report or a council, the minutes of a council meeting that a new page is thrown up that has, you know, the most recent crime stats. So those are two things I'd be looking for as a motion if someone would like to do that.
I'm so moved. I'll make a motion.
I think Sherilyn just had her hand up for a second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, so I'm moving. I'm making a motion to accept the um the community conversations on police use of force policies report and to ask Sherilyn and uh Chief Steel to come together and um bring a strategy to council. Again, objectives.
Have a motion in a second. Uh do I have any uh convers- conversations? Got a conversation in my head. Any comments on the uh motions? Any questions on the motions? Sherilyn?
Yeah, let me just um chime in really quickly and um say that the chief and I will get together and come up with the um something to bring back to you. But I I want to say uh thank you to the mayor and all of the council for um your your leadership on this issue. And I feel so proud of our department and Chief Steel in particular uh for the, for all of the things that you said. Uh we've watched uh other communities go through a series of these conversations in different ways. And um many, many councils um have had community members come uh to council meetings and um express negative uh reactions to the police department. And we have uh not experienced that on a very regular basis. Um community members come to the police department and drop off food and support and gift cards and and things that should tangible shows of support. And um it makes me feel very proud of our of our police department and the relationship work and the community work that the that the police department has put into into the community. So um again, thank you for your leadership in in this process. And um thank you to Chief Steel and the department for for going through it and for being the best that you can be.
All right. All right. So I have a motion in a second, but I see Counselor Pratt handing this up.
Can we add in to increase the frequency of um the Chief Steel coming to council and giving reports?
I think that was gonna be part of the work plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Suggestion. We can always tweak it from there. That was my assumption.
Okay.
Yeah, that was mine, too.
Yep. Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Uh so I'll go through the roll here. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Uh Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
The chair votes aye also. Again, as thank you, uh as Sherilyn mentioned, thanks, chief. I know you had several of your staff helping you out. And I again, I always give lots of uh props and shout outs to Megan here. Megan was integral and helping us put this together. Uh quite a few meetings between myself, Megan and Sherilyn. And uh I think it worked out well. And going to the point of Counselor Sacco, I hope the community, the conversation continues that if folks do have issue with the police department, that they do not fear uh having to talk to someone or send a suggestion in or an email. Um that you can see Chief Steel is very open to suggestions or is wants to know if there's something going awry. Um if anyone in the community feels that way, you can talk to any of us or uh approach Chief Steel. Uh go to the the person in charge if you want and uh have some have uh it looked into if you think there was something done wrong or you felt you feel you were dealt with unjustly. So thank you again for everybody's effort on this. And um I think we should be pretty proud of what we did with one of the few communities in the area that did it. So thank you to all. All right. Uh item number two is up next. Jeri Anne's been waiting patiently. Item number two is consideration of resolution number five three three eight dash twenty-one awarding the contract for construction of the Twalton Public Library Makerspace Project and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. Jeri Anne, it's nice to see you. Haven't seen you in a while.
Hi, it's nice to see you all. Thanks for letting me be here tonight. Give me just a moment to open my presentation. Okay. Um as Mayor said, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Library Makerspace. Twalton Public Library is a local center for lifelong learning. One of the priority areas we have focused on in recent years is STEAM programming. STEAM stands for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. STEAM has become an integral part of what we do. And STEAM programming supports both the council's and the library's strategic goals. While we're not currently able to offer the kind of programs you can see in this photo, we have continued offering uh STEAM activities during the pandemic through take and make activity bags and two recurring video series called Kitchen Science and Letting Off STEAM. We now have an opportunity to reimagine library space to create a Makerspace. A collaborative creative space where people can create physical objects and digital media and where the library can host STEAM programs. I spoke to council in December twenty eighteen about our plans. Since then, we have completed the design and we are now ready to start construction. This is what we envision. The project requires remodeling a portion of the library, including a reduction in shelving to create room for the Makerspace. We will build a flexible use multipurpose room of seven hundred thirty-five square feet adjacent to the teen room with a capacity of twenty to thirty people. The Makerspace will have counters on two sides of the room with cabinetry and defined workspaces. There will be exhaust hoods over our three D print. There will be exhaust hoods over our three D printer and laser cutter. And we envision the space would be used to offer programs for all ages as well as training and drop in access to Makerspace equipment such as vinyl cutters, sewing machines, a kiln, and a computer with media creation software. Through the Makerspace, Twolleton Library seeks to enhance the equity of technology access for our community with a particular focus on youth. Expanding access to learning opportunities for all is one of the most important roles that public libraries play in the modern age. People without equitable access to technology are not on a level playing field when it comes to education and future employability. Through this Makerspace, we hope to encourage an interest in STEAM among Twolleton's youth, enhancing their education and inspiring them to pursue careers in STEAM fields. The project cost, including construction, is four hundred and twenty-five thousand with funding for the project coming from a combination of city funds and a contribution from the Twolleton Library Foundation. The timing of this project is ideal because the library is currently closed to the public due to COVID nineteen. We anticipate construction beginning in late February with completion by the end of May. And on your agenda tonight is the resolution to award the construction contract for the Makerspace. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Jeriann. I remember back in two thousand eighteen, we were all very excited to see those plans. And you know, your big challenge was to raise the money. And I'm glad the Twolleton Library Foundation was able to help out. And this, I think, would be a great addition to the library. We had all kinds of questions about circulation, but you had it well in the control under, you know, the items that would be taken out of the library or low circulation items. Might get some of those questions tonight for folks who went around two thousand eighteen. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for questions for Jeriann. Council Brooks?
I just want to say thank you for all of your work on this. I'm very excited about the Makerspace as well. And, and then just from a personal perspective, I actually have a ceramics, a minor ceramics degree. And I was curious about the kiln, if it's for, is it for clay work? And if so, is there going to be clay available somewhere? Or do you use your, how does that work? I'm very excited.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking a small, like tabletop kiln that could be used for small ceramics and jewelry, that kind of thing. We would put, we would offer some materials, but we would also expect for adults to bring their own materials. So we haven't worked out all those details precisely yet.
Thank you very much. I have no problem bringing my own.
Other questions? Council President Grimes?
Thank you. This is such, I mean, I want to say cool because that just doesn't even begin to encompass how creative and wonderful I think this is. And such an opportunity to really stretch the way that we think about education and learning and opportunities for the community, you know, adults and children. So I'm thinking that there'll be a lot of tutorials going on in conjunction with the Makerspace and the different tools and things that are in the Makerspace. How do we, how do we find teachers, I guess, is my question? And do we have, or do you have the funding that you need to find instructors to help do classes and training and hands-on demos in this space? Because I think this is fantastic and I, I just want us to use it to the maximum amount that it can accommodate usage.
That's a great question. We are planning to hire a STEAM librarian this spring. And so we'll have a librarian who is dedicated to STEAM programming for all ages and working with the Makerspace. But we also expect to recruit volunteers specifically to help with the Makerspace. I think we're fortunate in this community that we've got a lot of high-tech industry in our community. And I know that some of those companies have employees who would be willing to volunteer at the library if they had a project that was of interest to them. So I think it's going to be good synergy for our volunteer program.
Oh, that's excellent. I'm excited that we're going to have a person that's just dedicated to that discipline because I think that's going to be fantastic. Have we reached out to any of our local high-tech partners to see if they want to either help with staff, as you say, for some of the trainings? Or possibly, you know, help us with some sort of a, a business sponsorship of this space?
We haven't done that yet, but that is on my to-do list to reach out to those local industries to see if they would be interested in partnering with us.
Okay, that's great. And if you ever want to take somebody with you on a meeting or zoom in an additional person, I'd always be happy to help with that because I think this is fantastic and I'd love to get some partners in that in the long term, it benefits the community and it can benefit our local businesses by getting people fired up and interested in, in the right direction. I'm here for you. I'd love to do it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Pratt?
Oh, Jeriann, I'm so excited. I remember when we did that Parks Master Plan, one of the big feedback items we got was that people really wanted, we have some programs for children and some programs for seniors, but they wanted programs that were for all ages. And this is just such a great program. And I'm so excited that you got the funding and we're moving forward. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Other questions? I've just got one quick one, Jeriann. So the Makerspace trailer, will that still stay in action post-COVID? As to augment the permanent Makerspace? And because I remember back in the day, I was going to the schools and helping out teachers on site. Because rather than having the kids come to us, we went to them. So is the vision to have both running, you know, in tandem, if you will, in a post-COVID world?
We do hope to continue using the trailer for outreach. I think we had a lot of success bringing it to Twolton Park and as part of the summer lunch service. And I definitely want to see us do that again. So we'll look for those opportunities.
Okay, thanks. I see Council Reyes has her hands up.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, it's so awesome. It, we hear so many people that want to volunteer during our committees when we interview people in our community and everyone's brilliant. They always like tend to want to be library parks. I mean, there's certain ones that are like the high demand and yours is definitely one of those, the library itself, it's one of those high demand, people want to serve and, and, and volunteer. So I'm really, really excited to see what we see from this. So you said it was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? That was, that would cost to renovate everything?
Yes, that's.
Where did, so did that money, was that raised through the foundation? And did you, is that the budget that you need? And what are the potentials of getting future grants or sponsors? And I think Council Grimes mentioned that a little bit. But I'm just looking forward to see what the future brings. But yeah, how is that raised? And, and and definitely opportunities for future grants? If you have in mind organizations that can support this program.
I think it's, I think it's a project that's well worth grant, seeking out grants. There are a lot of grants out there that support technology and especially to underprivileged communities. And that's something that we would, we would want to target. The Library Foundation has been working on some of those grants as part of their fundraising to help with the project. So it's a combination of a contribution from the foundation with the fundraising they've been doing and from city funds as well. And we believe we've got enough to cover the project, including, you know, some additional equipment costs and things like that.
And it's, the foundation is a five oh one C three, right? Okay, great. So I hear of anybody that supports these kinds of projects. I just want to make sure it's a five one C three, so I can send them your way. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I see Dawn just popped up. Does Dawn have a, talk about the money discussion here or what?
No, I was just listening in to see if there's anything else that needed to be added. You know, we're excited about, you know, our contribution, the foundation stepping up and other grant opportunities to make this project happen.
All right. So with that, if there's no other questions, how do you feel about the resolution?
I motion that we adopt resolution number five three three eight dash two one. Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt resolution five three three eight dash two one. Any discussions on the motion? Seeing none, Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It is passed unanimously. Thank you. Very exciting.
This is going to be a fabulous new space for the library when we are finally able to reopen to the public. It's something to be really excited about.
Yeah, it's something we can take away from Beaverton and Hillsborough with their bragging rights in their library. Especially Beaverton. All right. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Items removed from consent agenda, we had none tonight. So that moves on to council communications. As I mentioned previously, when we started the meeting, we didn't get to our work session tonight. So we do have, we do have two items from work session. One is a requested resolution from the US Conference of Mayors asking for a resolution to declare March second, I believe, is the first, the first Monday in March of twenty twenty-one as COVID nineteen victims and provide, can't talk, COVID nineteen victims and survivors Memorial Day resolution. We have a suggested lingo, if you will, or language for the resolution. I emailed over the weekend some suggestions that there was questions about, you know, is this for, is this forever or is this just this one year? So my suggestion was just to be specific this year. For this year, and we can always actually make this an annual one if we'd like each year. And then my other suggestion for this was we swap out where it says United States Conference of Mayors and just puts City of Twolton. Make it personal for us. How do other folks feel about the resolution? Or other suggestions you would have for it?
I like it. I like it and I like your suggestions.
All right. So do you capture those, Sherlin?
Yes, sir. Quick question. Do you want it brought back as a resolution or a proclamation? It feels like this is something like our typical proclamation process. Is it okay if we bring it back? Okay, all right. And it is fairly lengthy. Would you be okay with us pairing it down to one page? Or do you want in that, in that, the format?
I like Nancy's little symbol there, yes. Her little finger mode. Yeah, let's, let's make it ours versus the template.
Okay.
You know, we're still getting to the purpose and why we're doing it. We can make it, you know, Twolton specific and make it ours.
Yeah, all right. We will bring that back in plenty of time for the March first date.
All right. And then the second item on our work session was a suggested letter. Remember back in our first city council meeting together for this year that the Chamber of Commerce was asking for a letter, the letter to Governor Brown, specifically asking for those businesses that are still closed under the extreme risk category to maybe look at, looking at the numbers, looking at studies, looking at what the state of Washington is doing to maybe somehow have them open a little bit. You know, sticking to what the guidelines OHA has and making sure folks stay safe and that we do not promote the spread of COVID. But is there any latitude or some way that those folks who cannot open, like gyms and bowling alleys and restaurants, is there some way they could open at less than the twenty-five percent capacity? This is twenty-five or fifty percent capacity in high risk. Is there some way they could do it? And just asking her to reevaluate that with OHA because we have a lot of businesses here in town that, as you know, are still closed, still suffering. They're keeping their fingers crossed that we eventually get to the threshold where we can go to higher risk versus extreme risk. But who knows with the numbers, as Council Brooks said, it's not looking good right now. We're still at around six point six percent, six point seven percent. So we're solidly still in extreme risk. But I don't want folks to think we're, how do I put this nicely? We're not in the camp of the city of Sandy and some of those folks in Cockmouth County who want to totally override the governor's restrictions. We're just looking for a relook of what can be done to help out these businesses, either in terms of letting them open in some capacity or, you know, really advocating at the federal level that, you know, additional aid gets sent in our next relief package, ideally under President Biden. So questions, comments about the letter? Council Reyes?
I actually, I'm agree and in agreement with writing the letter. I think that it's been since November, early November, that we were actually at fifty percent. It was a fifty percent or twenty-five percent, I can't remember. But at my gym, I couldn't, we couldn't have more than fifty or a hundred people. And so I think, yeah, I think it would be great for, for us, for, for the, for us to know where, where are the plans? I mean, I see, I see and I read their, the updates, but I feel like I haven't heard anything about what, what are the plans to kind of slowly open up at different, like you said, at twenty-five, fifty. I mean, there are different, different capacities at one point. We were at, I can't remember if it was like a hundred or a hundred fifty or two hundred per space or per specific. So when are we, I mean, more people are getting vaccinated. I think the, the educators are getting vaccinated. Eighty years and over are getting vaccinated pretty soon. Oregon is doing pretty good. I mean, I've heard the numbers, but I've actually, we're doing pretty good as far as maintaining the, I don't know if it's the curve or, I don't know, like kind of becoming a little bit more level. And we're, we're not like we were back in December, I think it was, it was pretty big or November was high, but I feel like we're, it's, it would be good to see where we are and try to open some restaurants where people can sit down and eat. When we were like early November, I think that would be a good start. And which was very, you know, small capacity, but people can still eat inside restaurants. So I think that would be a good, that would be good for her to take a look at this and see where we are. And I speak for Twolton, so I feel like, like our restaurants here are suffering and our, our gyms and mental health. I, I, I don't get out of this room. Basically, I'm here all day. So I feel like I need to interact with people too. So if we can safely do it, I definitely support that.
Other questions, comments? Council Pratt?
Um, I, I want to question like the first, like item number one, it's saying collaborating with health officials during periods of extreme risk as defined by the Oregon Health Authority and some similar efforts of Washington State. And I looked them up and when we're in extreme risk, you know, in Oregon and Washington, no indoor dining is allowed. Indoor recreation and fitness is prohibited in Oregon and in Washington, it's five hundred square feet per person. Indoor entertainment is prohibited in Oregon and, and Washington, it's only allowed for six people to go into an establishment from the same household. So are we asking them to change their definition of what these guidelines are? Are we asking the health authority to actually change these guidelines? I'm, I'm not clear what we're doing here with that one.
The request is to look at the guidelines for extreme risk, like you're saying, Council Pratt. There is no indoor dining, but the state of Washington is reevaluating that due to similar efforts up in the state of Washington, the governor Ensley, that the extreme risk, and our version of extreme risk is a little bit different than Washington. That the extreme risk, and our version of extreme risk is a little bit different than Washington's. But to allow some businesses to open that have been shuttered. The discussion's been that the state of Oregon has picked winners and losers as far as businesses impacted by COVID. That, and this is, I'm just quoting what I've been seeing and heard and people told me. Here's Fred Meyer open, wide open. Their business really hasn't been impacted by COVID. But you look at a little restaurant, they're closed, they're done, they can't open. And who's to say the restaurant can't be as effective in maintaining COVID restrictions as Fred Meyer is? So that's what the request is, is just to, on the extreme risk category, give some leverage on letting some of these businesses who cannot open their doors on site. Let them open at some sort of capacity that they can, you know, start generating revenue, get people back to work. But remain safe and stay within the standards that OHA could possibly publish for them.
Okay, that makes a little more sense, but I, I mean, I want these businesses to open where anybody, you know, our small business community is the heart of our city, but I, I'm concerned that even at these levels are that they're going to even, it's worth having staff come in to service six people. And on the COVID, I just looked up Washington County and we're like where we're at in mid-November. We had a huge peak, but we went like this November, we went up here. We're equal with that. So we're, we're, we're still, we still have a ways to go. And I just want to point that out.
Okay. I started, Council Hillier, where her hand up. Do you want to go first, Jonathan, to answer some points or?
Yeah, I just want to address Council Pratt's number, concern with number one. The issue with number one is the key word of all businesses for a safe reopening plan. So we weren't advocating a specific policy change or rule addition to OSHA. It's just kind of going along the lines of what the state of Washington and now what the state of California has done. While COVID is impacting certain communities, what is the long-term reopening plan for all businesses? That kind of helps them prepare for the longer mitigation efforts of their own business.
Council Hillier?
Thank you. Welcome back, Jonathan. Hope you had a nice vacation. So I guess in last council meeting, we talked about the knowledge, Mayor, that you had that businesses did have the opportunity to be a little more flexible, that the city was more flexible and code. And I wonder if any have taken us up on that, number one. And number two, I guess I am in full support of rattling the governor and OHA's cage when it comes to our small businesses and the kind of discriminatory feeling that I'm sure small businesses have. But I would like us to consider a different word, just not to be a crazy wordsmith, Jonathan, at all. But I, I don't like the word we else on the fourth line down. Starting at third, and we also respectfully request that you do more. I think more for our small businesses. I know it says that in the next sentence. But because they are changing things a lot with the schools, there's a whole lot of moving parts going on. And like Counselor Pratt, you know, I'm, I'm double masking, you know, like I, I am very concerned for our community and our health. And I'm equally as concerned for our businesses. And I want to get us down into low risk. So I would just, I don't need to see it, but I would just ask that we consider that.
I think that's a very good point. I mean, that's easily added. I think, yeah, makes the sense a little stronger too. As far as examples, we have a perfect example from last week of Hayden's. We were approached by the Sitins who own Hayden's. That they'd want, they're trying to open up their, that back terrace area. And they come up, they came up with a plan to put some temporary roofing materials on the terrace that's back there. So that they could get 10 tables open in open air. City staff worked with them, I think, was it emails were flying back and forth on Friday. And a resolution came up that they, no permits, no fees. It's a temporary structure change that our building folks looked over and said, this is fine. You can do this. I talked to the Sitins today. And they're just looking forward to one either, their big is to go down to high risk. Because if they get down to high risk, then they can have the outdoor dining in addition to a few handful of tables inside the restaurant. So as soon as we get in a high-risk category, they will open up and Hayden's will have dining again, both indoors and outdoors. There's an example, the city going out and helping, but I know Sherlin's put it out several times that anyone in the Commons is more than welcome to talk to see about putting a tent up. Going into the public right away, as long as it's done safely and foot traffic can get by, we're more inflexible. We're, we're in a weird condition that most of our restaurants aren't on streets. I'm picturing, you know, downtown, Old Town Sherwood, where they closed down that whole street. I know that we had no problem with Bridgeport putting it down the street in front of the movie theater. And several cities have just shut down streets, but we don't, we're not in that situation. But we do have the Commons, which is nice, and we can grant flexibility there.
Yeah, and, and Oh, I'm sorry. And I appreciate you bringing that up again and highlighting it, because I think that just shows such great faith on behalf of the city to our business community. Thank you.
And in this whole back and forth with Hayden's on Friday, I, talking to the building official, Chris Ragland. There are a number of businesses around town that are, have put up outdoor, some outdoor dining, including Claim Jumper. Red Robin that are just off to the side and they have like five or six tables and are accommodating. Not, there are a number of, of businesses that are taking advantage and that we're not, we're just working with them and trying to get them, you know, open and going.
And the thing is, crosses if the governor, you know, does relook at the extreme risk. Then could pencil out for some restaurants where if they're only allowed maybe a handful of tables indoors, but they could, they have their tables outdoors. It pencils out that they could actually open again. And I'll pick on Hayden's. That's a perfect example for them. That it will pencil out if that helps out. Other questions, comments? Council Brooks? And then Council President Grimes?
Thank you. Um, well, I have, I have just such a different experience with losing somebody to COVID. And I wouldn't want anyone to be in the position that I was in. I will say that when his daughter came to town from Wisconsin, she and her son had COVID too. And they had had a huge outbreak out there. And I could look her straight in the face and tell her that, because of how much safety I had done, that I know he didn't catch COVID from me. And I want people to feel comfortable and safe that way too, that they never have to live with something like that. So I, as far as addressing the first issue. I, I look at the paper, the national news. And I'm really proud of our governor, keeping us in a yellow state instead of a red state. I want to say that first. I want to say that as a business owner. And even with the work that we've done in council, I just heard Jonathan Taylor do a report to me at the chamber. Talking about the restaurants that we've helped through the CARES Act, that 87%. When you take out the chains, 87% of the, of the restaurants we've helped have been local restaurants through the CARES Act. So, and we voted on those things unanimously. So I want, you know, that understanding around our council about supporting businesses, especially small businesses. I feel emotional, I'm sorry. I, I want to say that I saw an expert that is at Portland State University or I think Portland State University. Anyways, he's a viral expert and was talking about the, the measurements and why they do these measurements for gyms and restaurants. That when you're breathing heavier and when you're eating, you can't keep a mask on. So there's reasons why, it's not just picking on one quadrant. There's scientific basis and it does, the things that he talked about was, he said if he walked into an establishment where someone wasn't wearing a mask, including over their nose, he would walk out. And that's just his personal practice. At the same time, he was looking at ways of helping open schools through ventilation and masks. But ventilation and masks were the number one criteria. So that, those are the kinds of, and I have, I have his presentation. I could share with council if anyone's interested. But I think those are the kinds of scientific concerns that people have around those particular types of businesses. I'm all about supporting and how can we support even open-air dining? And I'm all about additional funding. I'm very concerned about the new strains that are replicating and how they're evolving. The reason why they're more contagious is because they have a greater ability to stick onto receptors. And from that ability, they're also able to replicate at greater rates. So you have higher viral load in addition. Then I'm also very concerned about the fact that we've changed to vaccinating teachers before medically fragile and older people, so that children will have increased exposure. Children are vectors for all kinds of illnesses, including viral infections. Which means they carry as asymptomatic spreaders. And as we see increases of viral load throughout our community, my concern is about mutations that become difficult to treat. We already see a decrease in effectiveness around the vaccines for the strains that have been discovered in Brazil and South Africa. And if we allow these strains to continue to evolve and replicate, they, they're still able to be treated with vaccines as they are, but it's not a good, promising development. So I have real concerns about the nature of the way that this thing is morphing. And also, you know, if we had a plan to get everyone, well, the vaccine situation. The change in the amounts of dosages that we were supposed to get. And then I also want to thank, I know there's retired nurses in our community. People on the front lines that are going out there out of retirement to help get people vaccinated. I'm really grateful to all the people that have gotten vaccinated, that are sharing about their vaccinations in their social media and with their friends. Because I think that's the key to getting through. So I'm okay with the second part, but I'm not in favor, especially, you know. And I, I don't know if my decision would be different before the change in the mutations and the strain. But I think that letter was written by the chamber before that happened and before we had cases here. But with these new cases, I'm, I'm waiting to see how virulent it is and how quickly it spreads. Especially because we don't have a lot of testing capacity. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Council Grimes? Council President Grimes, sorry.
Bridget, I completely understand your concerns and I, I personally don't, and I'm going to assume that none of us counselors, anybody wants to create a situation where we put anyone at risk, whether it's the employees or the patrons of a business. You know, I support relooking at options like state of Washington, state of California, to see if there's some sort of, you know, modest accommodations that we could make that could help some of these businesses survive. Because I think, you know, there's, there's such a cost in having entire industries shut down to the employees, to the business owners. To the communities that are losing irreplaceable local businesses. And I, you know, if there's anything that we can do that mitigates risk, but helps businesses stay afloat, I would love to at least explore that. And then I'd also just like to make sure that any kind of a letter that we send also, you know, again, underline bold. Options for funding to help businesses make modifications that make them safer. To meet more stringent standards, because I think that that's, you know, a difficult thing, because at some point, you know, if we look at making modifications, it's so expensive for businesses to continually try to anticipate what regulations and restrictions would look like. And then to be able to continually pay for it out of pocket when, you know, business is, is so suppressed right now. So I just want to make sure that there's, you know, requests in, in our request to look at ways to help, help mitigate some of this immense financial hardship. That businesses are facing both as lost revenue and then also, you know, making changes to try to accommodate what in some cases are kind of steel, loose and non-directive regulations to try to keep their businesses safe for employees and for customers. So that's, they need funding. That's my message. Sorry.
No, don't worry. I think the, the third bullet point kind of addresses that, you know, introduce a support legislation, providing additional financial relief. Both short and long term for small businesses whose operations have been severely impacted. You know, we might have Jonathan had some lingo about, you know, also fund for any kind of, you put it better, I'm brain cramping, on any kind of adjustments they need to do making operations to address COVID, if they had to put in new HEPA filters or something like that, that there's some kind of financial support there. Does that make sense, Jonathan?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what I was saying. I'm sorry, I was so long-winded, but that was my point was, I wasn't just talking about, you know, paycheck protection or, you know, short-term loans. I was specifically talking about making funds available for businesses that are making physical alterations to meet, you know, ever-changing standards for safe operation. Because to me, that's a whole nother section that, you know, people don't talk about enough. I mean, if you, any business, any of us have gone to, you've seen all the changes that they've made. And the smaller the business, the more expensive it is for them to bear. The, you know, oh, the construction and just everything they've done. And I just want to make sure we're kind of calling out the funding in kind of different buckets, and I want that bucket labeled.
Can you throw that in, hard bullet number three, Jonathan? I think there was a yes, I read his lips.
Jonathan will be able to say it in a much more cohesive and elegant way than I did tonight, but I think he knows what I mean.
Okay, Council Sacco?
Thank you. I just wanted to underline what Council Brooke said about, you know, being really concerned about people's lives. You're talking about people's lives. But I also think it extends to those individuals who are, who are business owners and who are out of work right now. And the mental health issues that go along with that and depression rates. And so there are, there are other lives being destroyed as well in the process. And so I, with, with that said, I, I think it's worth another look. Not to say that anything's going to change, but at least worth another look. I think that we owe those people that are impacted in other ways, another look. But not to say that, you know, one person's life is more important than another. But I think it's important that we also But I think it's important that we also realize that people's lives can be destroyed in multiple different ways as well by this pandemic.
That's going with uh, Counselor Sacco was saying, Counselor Brooks. You know, thinking on item number one, where it says developer protocol for the safe reopening. Uh, maybe bold that or underline that, you know, the safe reopening. Uh, so that we're not, we're not suggesting it's willy-nilly open up. We want to make sure that OHA. Um, is pretty confident that they do come out with an alternative for extreme risk, that people are still safe. As much as they can be um with people running around doing things, but you know, if they do go in a restaurant, they're gonna eat. And they're taking their own mask on and off, that OHA has taken that into consideration and maybe only allowed you to be at. Ten or fifteen percent capacity or maximum fifteen people inside. That, you know, we want safe reopenings, we just don't want reopenings, we want safe reopenings. Where people can feel comfortable going out and we don't increase the spread. I mean, that's not what we want and that's not what our compatriots in Clackamas County are advocating for.
I also got reached out from someone that wants to do public comment on this.
Uh, this is not public comment material. This is, this is a letter being issued by the council. That would have been in work session.
Oh, it's a citizen and I don't think they knew we were talking about this in work session. So um, I just. I guess. If it's, I don't know if in underlining, my thing, I mean, I want to be really clear. I, I um. I've helped work and business coach with people. I want people's businesses to be successful. I wa- I like the funding ideas. Um. I have to say, I have had exposure to a lot of vulnerable people. Part of my concern is that we haven't seen medically fragile people. Even a, a vaccine um plan. For people with cancer, for people with HIV, for people. That are walking around that people think are just fine. They look like very healthy individuals. And if they were to be exposed, especially with more kids running around and then we open businesses. Um, I have friends that are dealing with um people that they're losing right now down in California. With saturated hospital systems. I'm just so concerned that we're, we're so comfortable because, because our governor's done a great job. That we think that some of these small changes aren't gonna have impacts when we know that these changes. From the old virus. Grow exponentially and with the new virus, I don't know what it is. Um. And I don't know if that, you know, if those capacities help or hurt um business like. Business, what their, what businesses are actually exposing them to um. To, and, and the other thing is, I think that as far as public comment goes. Um, I've had feedback from people that said that they thought it was at six thirty. And so they weren't able to do the public comment because there wasn't a section open. At the time that was on the schedule. And then they had trouble because they were in the waiting room to get into the meeting tonight. So I, I'm concerned about that, just because people have bothered to reach out to me about it. Um, and I'm not comfortable with. Not allowing that um and making a decision without hearing from constituents that want to be heard. On this issue.
I like, this is the question to go through with items that are on work session. Work sessions never open to public comment.
But we, do we have?
This is a letter that we were gonna um either approve or disapprove, edit. Uh, this is not a public comment item. I mean, it's a purpose of work session. That's why these items are in work session. Because the persons that are reaching out to you are doing the exact the way they're supposed to is emailing you, texting you. Uh, giving you their views on this, because even if we did have work session, there would have been no public comment.
Okay. Well, the argument is that there's no definition right now, working definition of safe reopening with the quotes in safe. So um, so to stand for that doesn't, that's a difficult one.
Understand. All right. And I see a couple of hands up. So Counselor Reyes and then Counselor Pratt.
Um, I, I really appreciate what Counselor Sacco um brought uh up about the amount of mental health and the other. Um, the things, the people that are not speaking about how this has affected them in their men- in their, in the mental health capacity. Caused divorces, strain on family and children's um uh. Uh, financial health and I feel like this is sometimes um, we forget about that because we're being um. Like I said, we're focused on one thing and, and there are other people that have been thousands and thousands and thousands of family that lost. Their jobs in restaurants, dishwasher, and people that probably nobody would never speak up because. They can't, they feel afraid and they're overshadowed or their voices aren't being heard because. Um, they can't, they feel like they can't speak up and a lot of them have been, have been, people work at these restaurants. Sometimes we see the person that comes to us and, and sits us down, but we don't know who's washing the dishes, who's throwing the trash away. Who's actually um doing all the cutting of the veggies, who's bringing all that, all that fruit or veggies and meat to you. Um, so I feel like those individuals have been impacted tremendously. Some of the um, the issues that we have in families. Um, this, it's, it's actually financial, financial issues in a family can destroy a co- a family completely divorced. Um, and, and mothers, stressed mothers, single moms that are working in hotels, that are working in. In the hospitality industry, which is the majority of our um. Of our women who are single women work in hospitality, work in the restaurants, work in service. Not, and, and I'm talking about people that are in the minority community. Um, that work at, you know, restaurants all the time and they just feel like. I mean, how many restaurants do you see out there that are in our community that are um Mexican restaurants, um Asian restaurants? Um, and these communities are suffering tremendously because they. They are sacrificing themselves, saying, okay, I'm gonna sacrifice my business. So we can have a community survive and live. And, and we can be, they're all trying to work together and they're trying to, to um. Be a team player, right? I'm gonna, um, we're gonna do this. Yes, we're gonna take all those measures. Um, and at the same time, they're still being, they can't still open. These, all the measures that they put in place, washing their hands, putting all those um. Separators, uh, putting, wearing a mask all day, all that stuff and they still. Can't open. I feel like there's gotta be a way of reviewing that and seeing what um. What we can do for them. And there are people, people that can't, they're really vulnerable and can't come out and, and eat because. Um, they have that vulnerability or they're, they have some kind of underlying illness. I understand, uh, we have to like attend to them, but there's also this huge community that we're not. That we're thinking, oh, okay, they, they'll, they'll be fine. And you know what? It's, it's not fair too. So we gotta see those. Those difference um audience and, and the community that's being hurt by this pandemic in general. It's not just. She's not being ill, eh, just, just because I don't have it, that doesn't mean it's not affecting me mentally, emotionally. Um, uh, on the verge of like going crazy. So I feel like, um, you know, there are times that. You know, is it worth it? Should I just leave this earth? I mean, those are the thoughts that come to people's mind because of. Really, is it worth it? And my, and I feel like, I feel like we're, we're also neglecting that a little bit because. I don't show any kind of symptoms because I, you know, don't look sick or, and I, I don't think that's also fair. Um, so I, I think that these communities, these businesses, somehow we cannot wait until zero. Zero, zero, nothing has, I mean, this is, this, this pandemic is probably gonna be here for a very long time. So we gotta find a way how to, how to work with it. Um, as, and protect those that are vulnerable. And allow those that can continue somehow work in a safely way. Wash your hands, keep our distance, wear our mask, use all the protocols that we have to, to, to continue living. Just to continue living and, and, and working and providing for our families. That's, I think that's what some of these businesses are asking. Just let me work, let me continue live. And, and work through this pandemic in my own way of stress relieving. A lot of, a lot of work, work can be stress relieving for some people. Because they're not worrying about how they're gonna pay the bill, how they're gonna pay their, their, their rent. Um, mostly people that work in the, at dishwashers and serving, serving in the restaurants and the service industry, they are, they're probably rent. They don't really, they don't, they're not homeowners like us. Um, and so we, we forget sometimes that and I just don't want to forget them. I don't want to forget them either. Um, I'm constantly remembering my mom, my mom's in that age group that she's, she's not only uh in her, that age group, but, but she's also has. Underlying conditions. Um, and we talk about this stuff all the time. My, my sisters and I, we talk about it with my mom, what's gonna happen? What would, if it happened, what we, what are we gonna do? And we ask her, Mom, what do you want us to do? So I think that those are conversations that also families need to be having. If it happens to you, what are you gonna do? What are you, you know, because there are people have taken all the measures and still get it. So we don't know. Um, but I don't want to forget our community there. I don't want to forget our businesses and those families that are, that are mentally. Eh, financially struggling to the verge of maybe losing their home or moving into another um, moving, moving with another family. Because they can't afford living by themselves. So now there's another ten people in one apartment complex. Now you have more exposure. So. I don't know. I think that it's a, I, I support it and maybe my question to you was, um, after I made all these comments. It, um, when you're, when you're writing, do you need the signature of the, just us who want to uh support that or is it, if it's all or nothing?
It'd be, I just put my signature on it as representing the city. So be, I mean, what we do is.
I want to, can I say one thing too, Maria? Like what you said really reinforces my opinion of not doing it. Because those frontline workers are the highest at risk for loss of life. Those frontline workers are the people that are forgotten. Those deaths are the things that contribute to mental health problems. Um, the lack, people getting sick and more community spread is less customers going to the restaurants themselves. It's a spiraling downward that affects the businesses and the livelihood, the literal lives of the workers there. So thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pratt?
Um, I, I, my whole thing, I'm just having, I really respect what Counselor Sacco and Counselor Reyes said, but. Um, I have to believe the Oregon Health Authority has thought this through and that's where I'm having a hard time in. And I, I just wanted to point out that we're talking just about while we're in this extreme risk time right now. Because once we go down to the high-risk category, it just about copies what Mary Biebenick was saying, where these restaurants and. Businesses would have some capacity to open. So we're, it's just why we're in this extreme risk and I, I, and I'm just having a hard time where, when we're in this. Difficult time that hopefully we will get past sooner than later that um, we're asking for a change when other people. With more knowledge than us have made decisions. That's, that's where I'm having the difficulty. I want these businesses open, but. I don't want people dying at the risk of that. So that's where I stand right now.
Uh, Counsel President Grimes?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I respect everything that people have been saying about risk and exposure. Um, to me, this discussion. Or this request to kind of relook at the rules as they're being applied to me. And perhaps I've missed the mark here with my thought process, but to me, it was more about. You know, you wouldn't go to McDonald's drive-through and you're close at hand with the people. You get your food, uh, you know, and that's been deemed a, you know, an acceptable risk. You're gonna talk about, you can, I don't know, every drive-in in the universe, you can go, you can get your food, you go on. But that same opportunity isn't given a local restaurant to serve you. Less close, in a more controlled environment. Um, with less people. Eh, eh, I, I think that's where I was kind of coming from on some of this is just. Could we take a look at how we structured this? Because I think that there are. Industries that are bearing more of a brunt and then other industries that are kind of getting a little bit more of a free. A free ride, if you will, and that's probably not the right way to articulate this, but. You know, like I said, if you can go to Taco Bell and, and Jack in the Box and you can go to McDonald's and you can go to Wendy's and you can. Go to all these places where, you know, people are in contact with you, they're handing you the food. Eh, credit card payment, you're, you're right there by the window, sort of close, receiving your food, but. You know, Hayden's can't. Have one or two open tables in their entire restaurant and they would be able to have way more. Um, care and security about how they're treating their customers. That's kind of um. Close look I was thinking about more than. You know, starting to get into a giant conversation about, you know. COVID and the different strains and, and all of that kind of stuff. I was looking at it more of. Could they look at how they're restricting certain industries and get some sort of parity? That's kind of where I was coming from and that's what I was hoping that the letter would achieve. From that end. And, and I do understand everybody's concerns. You guys know, my parents live with me. My dad's ninety-three, my mom's eighty-eight. I can't get them a vaccination to save my life. I can't get a vaccination. I mean, it's just. It's goofy right now. I totally get that, but. You know, anyway, those were kind of my ideas of what the letter could possibly do is. Shore up the discrepancy about how some of this stuff is being applied.
I think that was very well said, Nancy. Um. Because I don't want to belabor this. I mean, it sounds like we've got a little bit of division here. I know uh, Counselor Sacco just had her, her, her hand up. Go ahead.
I'll be real quick and I, and I uh don't want any, I mean, any disrespect for those in authority who definitely know more than I do. Um, but I do look at other states who have um, who have successfully, I think successfully have um, a more open. Um, business policy and uh have, ha- have seen their rates go down. I have family that live in other states and I just pulled up their. Um, COVID rates and they're able to go to restaurants, go to museums and their COVID rate is going down. It peaked. Um, it peaked in December, but since then it's gone down. So I think that there are other ways that we can, uh, we can creatively. Have a more open policy uh and look elsewhere and, and get creative because just be, just because. Uh, we may have a, have a closed policy, doesn't mean that we, we might be doing it right as we see our, um, our COVID chart. Peaking right now where other states again that have a more open policy are, are going down. So. Um, I just think that there is, there's an opportunity to at least take a look at it. Thank you.
Right. So in order to move this on, I think we've had a very good conversation here. Is there anyone who uh? Would like to make a motion or it can either be approved, edit. Um, something, because I'd like to move this along, because you know, the chamber asked us to do it. Time is of the essence with the governor, because um, as people mentioned, things are changing weekly. And uh, she's getting more and more letters like this. I saw an email today, the state is being sued now. By the Oregon's uh chambers of commerce exactly for this. So this is gonna go to litigation. Um, so what's the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion to approve or any kind of motions? Counsel Pratt?
Good motion to approve it with.
Good motion to approve it with line item or item number one removed.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, to remove item number one from the letter. Any discussion on the motion?
With the, can I, can I say with that edit that I, I can't remember who brought up the edit of, um, something about, I think it was, uh, Cindy who says something about an edit or adding, uh, something to the letter.
Yeah, it'd be on the.
Yeah.
Small business on line four. Yeah.
Yeah, that, with that, um.
Yep. And also the recommendation on number three, if it becomes number two, three slash two, uh, about, uh, assisting businesses with retrofits and the adjustments they had to make to their businesses that Council Grimes brought up.
Okay. I see that. Okay.
Uh, Council Hillier.
Thank you. I'd love to see us, um, add to now two slash three, also some consideration of additional employee um, training around COVID and, um, if it's especially in a restaurant situation or something like that, if we do this. And also I feel like that the, um, spirit of our conversations, um, could potentially change the tone of, of the letter. So if we're rewriting it, I just, um, would say that to Jonathan, not to reword anything. Cause I'm not doing that, but I do feel like the spirit, um, of, of our voice, um, has changed.
I'm just going to see people have their hands up. Uh, my, my thoughts, to me, item number one, is the main reason for the letter, that get businesses back open safely. Uh, but I'm not gonna, I'd rather get some letter out than no letter at all. I think that's what, is that what you're getting to, Council Hillier? That would, by taking one out, is taking out the spirit of the letter? Or is it my misunderstanding?
No, thank you for asking. That is not specifically what I was referring to. I do understand, um, why you would ask that. Um, I guess just overall our spirit of the balance. Because, um, bringing in the mental health, just all the components that were talked about tonight, I think each one is very valid. And, um, I don't know how you would ever pull all that in, but, um, I feel like that was the spirit more so than just a hard line, we want more.
All right.
And I'm not suggesting any changes. I just wanted it noted.
Okay. So we've got a motion, a second to approve the letter with some edits to three. Removing item number one and, uh, Jonathan rewatching this recording to maybe incorporate some of the other items we discussed about mental health, uh, into an additional bullet point. How does that sound?
Why are we removing item number one again? I'm sorry. I'm just really confused about that. I'm reading.
The motion in the second was to approve the letter with some edits with the, with the deletion of item number one.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So item number one, we go bye-bye. Uh, we'd have two bullets, maybe three. With the edits on the line number four, the edits to line number three that Council Grimes, Council President Grimes talked about. And some all encompassing linguistic, uh, perfection by Jonathan to wrap up some of the other points we talked about. Council Sacco.
Um, so, and I'm sorry, because everybody knows I'm new. So our next, our next, um, stuff would be to vote, um, you know, I, I think yes, a letter is better than no letter. But, um, I also, to your point, um, mayor thinks, think that the main point was number one. And that we might be, um, that, that we might be missing the, the mark of the entire request. Um, and so I, I don't want to, I don't want to vote, vote no and stop anything from moving forward in a positive note. But I also am concerned about leaving off, um, number one.
All right. All right. So I gotta make sure I got this all right for, with our legal eagle with Sean. So if we, you can always vote no if you don't like the, uh, motion in the second with amendments that weren't me, me the most graceful way. Per Robert's rules of order. Um, and you know, say you want to stick with item number one or, um, perhaps we do this letter, this initial letter, um, see what happens in the next couple of weeks, couple, three weeks. And nothing's stopping us from sending another letter based on what we see is happening in the environment. But I think it's important that the governor know where we stand as far as, uh, especially on business assistance and, um, getting businesses reopen. I would like item number one state to stay there, but, um, I want to get a letter to the governor sooner than later. And as I just mentioned before, I'd rather, you know, I can bring this back up or we can have representatives in the chamber. Come ask again for another, uh, suggestion of a letter. So I got a motion, a second. Uh, so I'll just go through the roll. Uh, Council Pratt. What was that?
Yes.
Okay. Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Uh, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Uh, Council Sacco.
Aye.
Uh, Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote, I also, uh, again, so, uh, if Jonathan and staff can, uh, edit the letter as requested. And I might just bring this back up in a couple of weeks or representatives in the chamber can come back asking us to look at item number one and shoot off another letter based on what is currently happening in the state and other states. And relooking at getting some of these businesses that are open, uh, that are not, uh, not to belabor the point, but if you look at the numbers in the counties, some counties flip back and forth. That they'll go from high to extreme risk, which is a big change for businesses, opening, closing, opening, closing. Yep. So that's why I wanted to deal with number one, to give an opportunity for, uh, a business to open extreme risk. Maybe they have to change their seating capacity, but at least they stay open. Uh, so.
Right.
For Susan Nowak, who is the chair of the board of the chamber, this is, uh, we can bring this back up as far as addressing number one, based on, again, the environment. Uh, cause I think a lot of us do want to get businesses open. We just want to, I guess, say it the right way in the letter and make sure, um, that places can open safely.
Thank you, mayor. We will work to craft a letter that encompasses, uh, the varied, um, comments that were made tonight. That will be a, a tough challenge. Um, we did get good, some direction. Um, and this does not preclude any of you from writing your own letter. Um, it can't be on behalf of the entire council. It can be on your own behalf. Um, but the, uh, so we will craft, we will work together to craft a letter that hopefully pulls together what you talked about tonight.
And then that's the one I'll sign and we'll send off, uh, to the governor and CC. Um, I think the Chamber of Commerce and a handful of others who would be interested in seeing this letter. All right. Well, thank you for that discussion. Um, I mean, COVID is, you know, like having multiple impacts, business impacts, mental health impacts, economic impacts. I'm looking forward to these shots getting out here, folks. And, you know, getting four or five vaccines and getting distributed and getting people's arms. So that, uh, we can get down to, uh, lower levels of risk. So I think that's the last sentence we had tonight. So we going on to council communications, our roundtable session. Recall that, uh, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. And I'll go in the order of the pictures in Zoom here. So Council Pratt, you're first.
Um, um, I went to the C4 Metro Subcommittee and, um, mostly it was a discussion about there's a study and they're, um, being done in Oregon City for a pedestrian bike bridge. And so that's moving forward. It's great. It sounds like, um, there's an existing bridge that's got traffic on it and that's the only unpopular choice at the current time. So, um, that's really exciting and they're doing a lot of redevelopment in that area. So it'll be great to have that access for people. Um, the core area of parking, um, committee, um, the big thing we discussed there was the, um, um, increasing the rates by 0.5%, um, which matches the municipal code cost index increases. And it was decided to go ahead with that with the same idea. I think we've kind of had it council where they'd rather give a small hit to people. And, and really we were looking at businesses and it was like five and $11 for a year. So most businesses, it was a very small amount and it wouldn't take effect till July. So it was voted on to, um, move that forward just so people don't have a bigger hit down the line. To give them a little bit now instead of a lot later. Um, I listened to part of the Metro Waste, um, committee thing about, I couldn't listen to it all because I have, you know, real work. But, I mean, work where I get paid. Let's put it that way. But the part about HB 2065 where they're going to put some cost on the, um, producers and instead of increasing rates to, um, the, you know, us, the people that pay for the garbage bills are going to put it on the producers to help extend, um, recycling to areas, um, more rural areas and diverse areas. So that's how they're going to cover those costs. The one thing about that, that, um, I thought we should note is that, um, this is going to require us as cities to make sure that recycling is available. Um, it, where there's multifamily units and that the, our city is going to have to provide educational materials at multiple locations. And then lastly, I would just want to say, um, we just had a very heated discussion and I really appreciate everybody's comments in them. I'm just glad we can have these discussions in a peaceful manner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council Hillier.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I have been in contact with Jerianne to get scheduled for the science committee meetings. And with Bates, we're, um, confused on the dates for our technology or our, um, the broadband. Sorry, I can't remember the name of the committee, but there are some confusing dates out there. Um, they were for 2020. And so anyway, we're getting that on the calendar and looking forward to moving forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council Brooks.
Hi, thank you. And, um, and thank you too for the previous, um, discussion and also for bringing it up, mayor, around the, um, the restaurants and other businesses that are suffering right now. Um, and I'm glad that we could do something and, um, I wish I could agree with everybody a hundred percent all the time and they were all unanimous decisions, um, to start with. So I went to the key leaders meeting at the chamber, like many others did on the 12th. Um, and we got to share our perspectives of our goals and vision. I know we haven't had our advance yet, but I wanted to thank Linda Moholt for the opportunity. Congratulate her on her retirement and congratulate Susan Nowak on being, um, the chamber's new board chair. And welcome Roy Googlio, Googlioda as the new, um, CEO of the chamber. And also I wanted to, I also went to, um, Linda Moholt's retired virtual goodbye party. And, um, staff, uh, Caitlin and Ida Hacker just did an amazing job on that party. It was a really nice party. Um, I also wanted to talk about the, um, Washington County Public Advisory Board. This is big stuff. Um, on the 14th, we, well, first of all, we said goodbye to Val Velfry, who wasn't reelected and has been a really great contributing and, and the mayor knows, a really great contributing member of the board. He will still be in the community, but we had a nice goodbye with, for him. And we are setting up for this, um, community development block grants and home grant applications. They'll be coming in for evaluation this week and I'll be doing my evaluations after our advance over the weekend. Um, so I'm going to have a very busy weekend. And, um, since the home grant wasn't extended last year, this will be the first time I'm doing that. And there, it looks like there's enough money for all the applicants, which includes, um, if everything goes well, our applicant from Basalt Creek. So I just am thrilled to share that news and I want to thank our mayor for all the footwork that he's done on this project. We haven't had something go in, I think it's close to, I think it was 2008 or maybe even more time than that. I can't remember. I'm sorry. Um, and then also we're, I was making sure that, you know, the work systems knows and has helped facilitate for the pipe fitters. And, um, HVAC, uh, Community College, that's incorporated into some of the service provision for some of the, um, CBD, the community development block grants and cares money for work retooling to make sure that that 1210 resource is part of the package for people that are wanting vocational rehab. Um, or just new, new forms of work. Um, I went to the National League of Cities Vaccine Rollout Conversation, which was a very important conversation. Um, and talked very much about, uh, people of color disproportionately being affected by COVID as well as other vulnerable populations and the strategies around the national rollout from, uh, Public Health National Leader. Um, also the League of Oregon Cities, um, when there was the briefing, when the vaccine doses numbers was different than what was originally promised. And then on Martin Luther King Junior Day and happy MLK Day to everyone here. I attended the Awareness and Action event. Our own Chris Ragland from the Building Department, um, worked on that and it was amazing program and I'm sure you can catch it online. Um, Tom Steiger, I saw in my neighborhood also working on that day and his day off to remove a big tree. So I want to give a public shout out to Mr. Steiger and Go Wings. He knows what that means. And, um, on the 19th and 20th, I'm sure all of us were, um, watching the inaugural events. And I wanted to just say a shout out to Amanda Gorman, the 22-year-old poet that did that amazing poem. And also I love the idea of doing the pledge of allegiance with, um, sign language and would love to learn that. Um, the 1210 Arts Advisory Committee, we accepted an artist, Redstone Rodolfo Serna, to install a mural. This is exciting news at the 1210 Community Park, at the main picnic shelter part of the, and it's part of the Washington County Psyche Grant. So that's the same grant that was for the Christmas parade. Um, and there'll be opportunities for community involvement. Um, and that'll be happening in, in February. So look at the Parks and Recs part of the website. And I just want to thank Julie Ludeman, Ross Hoover, and all the volunteers on the 1210 Arts Advisory Committee to put together these psyche opportunities for the wellbeing of our community through arts so quickly and so well. On top of all of the other work. And I too attended the Metro Regional Waste Advisory Committee. Um, and I think the part that Valerie missed was that they're trying to find a site for a new transfer station. That was the second half. And also they're making efforts for, um, increased composting efforts as well for food waste. Um, and I also went to the resilience advantage webinar, which highlighted Oregon, even though it was a California-based thing, um, and expert Byron Williams, the State Treasury of Oregon and Principal Craig Stockbridge, um, discussed pretty surprising advances around earthquake resiliency in building. How to prioritize, like we've prioritized our treasury building here in Oregon. And that was the building that was highlighted and discussed lower cost ways that we can be seismically, um, mindful in building and then also prioritization ways of, you know, like these money, places that hold our money, places that hold medical research, in different ways to prioritize seismic building and retrofit. And then we started Lip, the local implementation planning. And then we started LIP, the Local Implementation Planning Phase Two. And I just want to give another shout out to Family Promise um with their leadership, Rose Money, the Executive Director here. And Stacy, I met with Stacy, the Regional Director of Ten States, Western States, and she lives here in Beaverton and right in Washington County. So I'm making sure to incorporate our little part of the county into the conversation around the housing, the metro housing bond and make sure that we, I'm, I represent geographical diversity and make sure that as sort of a service desert here, that we have people that understand our community and have access to our community and serve our community at the table and that our community has a voice in what affects them. And.
What's up?
Sorry, I just. And the climate, um I sat on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee. I just listened in and the Department of Land Use and Conservation Division working to address Governor Brown's executive order and what's going to be coming down to cities. So I think it's a really important conversation to be aware of. And also sat in on the Twelton Chamber BAC and plan to continue. And thank you, Jonathan, for your great presentation regarding where we're at as a city with our business community. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh people moved around pictures here because people were dropping off the meeting. Uh Council Reyes.
Um, I'm gonna spare my time here and give it to whoever needs to speak. So I have nothing to report. So thank you. But hey, everyone, hope you're all doing great.
All right, uh Council Sacco.
Um, so I attended the Twelton Together Coalition Meeting and I'll let Cindy speak more to that. I'm sure that she can she can talk more about that. But I just wanted to say thank you to Cindy um for the great work that you're doing over there. And I will be attending in the future. So thank you for extending that invitation. I've been um working uh with Council Brooks um a little bit, getting my feet wet in the Water Committee. Ha ha, feet wet. So thank you very much for that. Um I appreciate all um, all your efforts with getting me up to speed. Thank you very much. I also attended um the Key Leaders um with the um Chamber of Commerce uh meeting. And it was very insightful to hear from um all of the key leaders and also um the Twelton representatives that were there. We spoke about, a little bit about our personal priorities and it was great to see that um we are aligned on a lot of things. Um and it's great that we can have a discussion like we had tonight, but also know that um our hearts are all in the right places. Um and so thank you for that. Um and that's it.
Thank you. Council President Grimes.
I have nothing to, of consequence to share this evening um other than to say as everyone else did, thank you for um another great meeting where lots of diverse ideas and opinions were shared. And um I think it was all done in a very respectful and fruitful format. And I just appreciate everybody's uh input and everyone's diverse backgrounds and the different expertise everyone brings. It's a great group and I'm looking forward to Friday and Saturday and planning for the future. So good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh quickly, I also attended the Chamber Key Leaders Breakfast on Zoom. As uh Council Sacco said, uh it was nice to hear that the four representatives were all pretty much aligned with some of our core uh goals for the coming years. That's terrific. Uh here comes the acronyms that just drive you nuts for the new counselors. So on the fourteenth, I attended the GPED Board, which is the Greater Portland Economic Development District Board. It is part of Greater Portland Inc., GPI. It's required, uh each economic region has to create a SEDS, which is CEDS, which is a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. The SEDS is submitted up to the federal government for the region uh so that the, the feds know what each regional economic development agency or organization is up to and what their goals are. Uh this committee is, this board is about forty-odd people. And they're working on the SEDS, again, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Um three parts of it, the vision, the value and the principles. You'll see more about that to come. Uh on the fifteenth, I attended the West Side Economic Alliance Legislative Reception via Zoom and got to see uh here some of the priorities from some of the legislators in our region. Uh later that day, I was on the same call as Bridget with the League of Oregon City Call where we found out that there were no immunizations sitting in the federal warehouses um and that the state was scrambling uh because later that day I had a meeting with uh it was supposed to be an immunization meeting with the Washington County Sheriff, Chair Harrington, and the Washington County Mayors where we um bemused the fact that there was no federal more, uh federal vaccines to distribute. Uh but with that, you know, figured out Washington County is going to plan on with the state uh to get vaccines out there. The struggles they're having right now is that they never know how many are coming in. Uh hopefully this will change with the new administration. So there's no way to plan when week by week, you have no idea how many of uh vaccines you're gonna get for your county. On the twentieth, I attended the Greater Portland Inc. Board Meeting. Uh I was elected by that board to represent the Small Cities Consortium uh for GPI uh in that they recovered their uh twenty twenty successes. They reviewed their twenty twenty-one benchmarks and they're planning for the goals they have for continuing to attract bigger companies to the region or companies that have uh significant payrolls, if you will, to the region. They also reviewed the GPED SEDS, get into the acronym thing again. Uh they just passed a twenty twenty audit from an accounting firm and their finances are looking good as far as last fiscal year. Uh on the twenty-first, I had my first uh Clackamas County Chair Mayor meeting uh with Chair Tudy Smith. Uh she introduced herself and we introduced ourselves to her. Really quickly, uh Clackamas County is working with FEMA to help out those folks who are impacted by the fires both financially and with uh cleanup. Uh that is continuing on. Something I was surprised with, uh Chair Smith wants to have in-person commission meetings starting next week. No longer Zoom. I don't know. Uh she's trying to get the clearance on that to make sure that can happen. Uh her priorities right now are to get schools and small businesses open in Clackamas County. She also uh wants three, wants to look at three priorities for Clackamas County because of the fires. She's looking for a enhanced emergency communication system for Clackamas County residents. She'd like to have established evacuation routes for folks so they know where to go in the event of a fire or a disaster. Because in certain towns and small villages in Clackamas County, there's only one way in and one way out. Uh then she also wants to plan to organize volunteers. People stepped up and helped out tremendously in Clackamas County. She wants a way to organize them so they can protect people and property. So those three priorities will be coming from her in terms of lessons learned from the fire. And finally, um she does not want uh what's happening in the city of Portland to happen in Clackamas County. So she fully intends to fully fund the Sheriff's Department uh with whatever funds they need. This was not done under the previous chair because there was some disagreements, uh but she has a different opinion for the county. So it was a uh good first meeting. She's going to continue the monthly meetings with the mayors. And later that day, I had the Twelton Chamber Board Meeting. And today was Washington County's Chair Harrington's Mayor's meeting with us. And I sent you the minutes of that, so I will review that because you've got it in your email. Anything else for tonight? All right, everybody looks tired, ready to go. So I have a, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor, just raise your hand and say aye. All right, have a good evening, everyone. Uh be safe, continue, wash your hands, wear your masks, stay distant.
Two masks.